City Council member.
Shelby Carcelary, City Council member.
Troy Tabor, City Council President, in for the mayor tonight.
Greg Shonner, Council member.
Tim Berry, Council member.
Okay, the next, the next item is the invocation, and tonight we have, I would say pastor sextum, that is incorrect, it is.
Non-ethanol.
Okay, I saw retired on your thing, so, but we'd appreciate you to lead us in prayer tonight, thank you.
And I'm gonna take this off so I don't get muffled, so, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to you for your grace and your goodness to us. We lift up this time to you, pray that you grant wisdom and direction during this meeting. We also lift up Mayor Price and his family and his daughter especially, may you draw near to them and strengthen them, and guide the doctors and the nurses as they care for his daughter. We thank you, Lord, for your, the hope that you give us, and may you just make yourself known to us during this meeting. We ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen, thank you for that. The next item is the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Really do love that we do the Pledge Allegiance every night. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to get up and speak, and if so, come up to the podium and state your name? Okay, no takers tonight. The next item is item number six, it's the acceptance of the agenda. I'm assuming everyone's had the chance to read this tonight, we had a couple changes. I'm assuming there's nothing beyond what was already updated tonight, so, make a, have a motion for someone to approve and second the agenda, please?
Mr. President, I move to accept the agenda as presented at this time.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Homer and a second by Michael, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any ayes? Alright, we'll move on. The first presentation tonight is regarding a municipal golf course. Who's gonna present, oh, very good, thank you.
Check one, two. Hello, everyone, welcome, it's great to be here, my name's Randy Hunt. Address, 2101 Greenbrier, Lawrence, Kansas, representing Oaks Golf Management, the manager of the Andover Municipal Golf Course. Councilmen and women, you have in your packet the report that was submitted. I'll entertain any questions that you may have. As a general comment, things are going great, things continue to go great. They have been exceeding expectations, and we are excited, continue to be excited, and look forward to more great weather, and I'll answer questions, if any.
Any questions?
It was a very positive report, and I appreciate that. Can you tell me how many members you have currently?
We've sold forty-nine memberships. Some of those are more than one person, if you will, so total, total membership sales, forty-nine.
And how many of those are in Andover?
Lance, can you help me with that? I, I provided, I presented a copy to the city administrator, and they were gonna break down specifically those that are not only Andover, but also Green Valley, and I do not have that in, in front of me.
I don't have that, those, those numbers for you tonight, but I can get them to you.
Okay, alright, that's probably gonna be a standard one I ask every time, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on a limb and venture to guess that seventy-five percent are in Andover of those, and the specifics will, but we'll get you for Green Valley and Andover actuals.
Yeah, and we can build that in when you get these quarterly reports, we'll just make that a standard report or data point that we report to you.
Okay.
Hey Randy, I do have a question on the equipment repair. It looks like there was a line item for three thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. What, I mean, what's in that equipment repair?
Uh, that's.
Was that part of the mower?
That's the golf course equipment, we've had significant repairs on the equipment, whether it's fairway unit, rough unit, greens mowers. As you all know, we did have a, an unfortunate fire on the rough unit. That was an insurance claim, but before that, we had significant repairs or attempted repairs to the equipment.
Because those were inherited, as, as far as the equipment goes?
Yes, sir, that's all, that's all the equipment that was on property and left over from the previous operator.
Okay, that explains it, thank you.
Yeah, we purchased those from the previous operator, so those are city-owned machines. So, I'm assuming that you are responsible for the repairs on those, or?
We are.
Okay.
Any more questions for anyone? Well, I wanna point out that it's, it's amazing how exceptional this is going with, with the golf course. Looking at the number of rounds, more than a thousand more rounds played than were actually forecast, that's, that's exceptional. And it looks like part of it has to do with weather, probably a lot of, just because we've been talking about it a lot for the last year. I guess a question would be, is there anything further that the city can do to help maintain or even help increase that? I know that you're exceptionally happy with the city already with what we're doing, but are there things that we could be doing, you think, that would help?
You know, at this point, in the first year and just five months in, we, like you, are extremely happy with what we see. The relationship that, that I and we are experiencing with city staff has been over the top. And at this point, I can't think of anything more that we would want to do. Let's all knock on wood and hope that things continue to go our way, because Mother Nature plays a part in this, and she can be fickle at times.
Sure, well, good, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Alright, the next item is item number eight, we have a request, a citizen request. Uh, you can take that over, alright, go ahead.
Alright, good evening, everybody, sorry for the last-minute edition of this, but I am here to represent the event that is requesting this, because they had a meeting tonight in just this last minute. So, Midwest Dance Mechanics, which is a dance studio in Wichita, has reserved the amphitheater for this weekend for a viewing of, of a recital. Obviously, they can't get together and actually dance in their space, and so, a lot of their kids haven't been able to do what they do. So, what they wanna do is use our screens in the amphitheater to view their recital, but as part of it, they want to turn it into more of a, an event rather than just come and watch a recital. And so, they're requesting to have food trucks on site, and they're gonna have four food trucks on site. And the reason I'm coming tonight is because while we were figuring all this out, we, the UDM requires approval from the council for a food truck to then on public property. So, these food trucks are, they intend them just for their event, they're not, they're not intended to serve the public while they're here at the event. We did meet with them this afternoon, and there's a little bit of change from what I've written in the summary. They plan to be on site at five instead of six, and then they said the whole event will probably be over by ten. So, it's a come-and-go event, she said three hundred or less, but they're gonna come and go, and they're gonna social distance and do all of that, they just wanna be able to have food trucks here for their attendees, since it's around dinnertime that they're planning to do this. So, that's what's for you guys today, and just wanted to bring that up, since we have to get approval from you guys to allow the food trucks in the park.
There's no additional fees they're asking for, just the food trucks, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and they, and they're not requesting any fees waived or anything like that, they were paid in full. They paid that when they made the deposit, or when they made the reservation, so.
Is there any additional cleanup that normally would happen due to food trucks, or is that something they will take care of, part of their deposit maybe, or?
Um, yeah, but they do, they did put a damaged deposit down, and that's part of it, if, if it doesn't get cleaned up, our Parks Department will make that determination, and we can use that damaged deposit, but the food trucks are self-contained, they won't be using our parking lots, or anything, they're gonna park right next to the amphitheater, and they have their own generators, so they don't have to plug into our power or anything like that.
Very good.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend approval of Midwest Dance Mechanics' request to have food trucks during their event at Capitol Federal Amphitheater on August fifteenth, at five o'clock till midnight, at council's discretion. Second.
Okay, looks like we have a motion by Mike and a second by Tim, any further discussion? So, I have a question then, on the, on keeping it safe, is there a thought on maybe markings six feet from the food truck and then making a line, at least a few, to keep people distanced? Is that something that, I don't think we've ever discussed necessarily that in any of our events yet? Is that something that we wanna think about, requiring, or just let them take care of it?
I think that's probably something the food trucks probably would just do anyway as a business, but it, you could definitely recommend it.
Yeah, we can recommend it, and they're, they're open to whatever we need to require for them to do it, so, that's definitely a recommendation that I will make to them, and I, I think, like you said, the food trucks are probably gonna wanna do that anyway, just for safety and.
Alright, well, we have a motion and a second by Mike and Tim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. I'm assuming everyone's read this, so if I can have a motion and a second.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you, Homer and Mike, so we had a motion by Homer and a second by Mike, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Alright, consent agenda passes. The next item's a cool little item, we have regarding the transfer of a police vehicle. Chief Keller, did you wanna make a few statements?
Real quickly.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor and Council, on August fourth, one of two Sedwick, the town of Sedwick Police Department's cars, one of two cars was struck by another vehicle while it was stopped in the road and was totaled out. And so, they immediately started looking around, trying to find a replacement for, you can imagine, they only had one vehicle left. And we were fortunate enough, almost on that same day, we pulled one of our vehicles off the line, a two thousand and thirteen Ford SUV Interceptor, that it was due to be replaced this year, and we pulled it off the line to start stripping it of the equipment we needed, and we, we felt it would fit their need, so we immediately contacted our liaison, police liaison, and Jenny contacted the mayor, and thus, we're bringing it to you, we'd like to donate them or sell it to the city of Sedwick for one dollar.
Very good.
Mr. I don't have any questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Also, we have the chief from Sedwick here with us to accept it, if you pass it.
Peer pressure. Mr. President, I move to approve the sale, the transfer of the two thousand and thirteen Ford SUV Police Interceptor to the city of Cedric for one dollar.
Second.
Alright, thank you, Homer, thank you, Mike, it's a motion and a second, do any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Councilmember Tabor, this is Chief Ryan Daly, who's here to accept the keys from you.
I hear you drove, so I'm gonna have to drive a few vehicles home.
Well, we'll get that coordinated, thank you, sir. My mayor asked me to deliver this letter to your mayor, but I don't think he was aware of the events that had taken place, would you please make sure that he gets that, sir?
We'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to be helpful.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Was the officer okay, who was in the crash?
He was, he ended up being off for about a week, typical front-end collision, head-on collision. Airbags deployed, and in the process of airbags deploying, the airbags themselves actually injured the officer.
Alright, great.
He was off for about a week, he's back for now.
Wow, glad he's safe.
Thank you.
Definitely thank you, alright, we're onto item number eleven, which is our budget presentation, Lance.
Mr. President, Council, tonight, culmination of a long, hard journey to get to the formulation of an annual budget for a city. So, I'll paint a little bit of a picture, then we'll kinda get into the process, we'll do a presentation for you, all information you guys have heard, but also those that may be attending from the public or watching, hopefully, from home, and then we'll eventually end with your consideration on adopting the budget for twenty twenty-one. So, like I said, this staff and direct and indirect ways have been working on the formulation of this budget for the past year. Intensity of that work has picked up at the beginning of this year, starting with priority sheets that you all submitted to staff to give us direction as we're kinda putting together preliminary budget ideas. And then, you all have obviously had various, all departments and all funds presented to you in detail up to this point. At your workshop in July, we presented a proposed budget in totality to you, where you provided staff feedback, and then we went and made those changes, came back to you at your last meeting where you had published the mill levy and a notice of public hearing, which has led us to tonight. Trey, I don't know if we can get the projectors up so I can see what they're looking at? Getting there, maybe?
It's COVID's fault.
Can you tell us your name and address?
Yes.
Different type of virus than a computer virus.
Just in time. Okay, so, the actual presentation portion of this, and then after we complete this, we'll open the public hearing, you guys can hear public comment, close that, then actually do your consideration of adoption, adopting the budget. None of this information has changed, per se, from when we presented it to you at your last meeting, but to reiterate, the proposed mill levy for the twenty twenty-one budget does remain flat as compared to our current mill levy for twenty twenty at forty-two point three one one mills. Same for the Fire District number one mill levy. For twenty twenty-one, we do have almost six hundred thousand in additional revenue to use for operations within the city. Of that is largely because of a thirteen point four million dollar growth in valuation within the city. That thirteen point four million in valuation, almost seventy-five percent of that increase in valuation was, was because of new growth within the city. Seven hundred and twenty-two thousand is for rebates that we were providing per our neighborhood revitalization program that are coming back onto the tax rolls, and then another three point two million in valuation growth for existing properties. And the proposed budget does not require a vote of the city council, we are not adjusting the mill levy or exceeding tax collections that would trigger that vote. So, some highlights that we've spoken about before, but the twenty twenty-one budget does include a two and a half percent merit increase for city employees, and a one percent cost of living adjustment for city employees, both scheduled to begin at the beginning of the year. An additional half a percent has been included in the budget for those employees who receive an exceptional rating on their evaluation. We budgeted ten percent for an increase, a potential increase, to our health and dental insurance. We budget that every year, it doesn't mean it necessarily is gonna go up ten percent, but we do our due diligence and prepare for that circumstance. Personnel, other personnel items, the budget does include a halftime dispatcher becoming a full-time communications dispatch employee, the addition of one new firefighter in preparation of expanding our fire service over the next few years, and then one new full-time parks employee with an additional five hundred hours for seasonal work to help us through the busy time of the year. There is an increase in the contribution the city has to make to our public safety, our emergency response, our police and fires retirement. So, currently, that's going up eighty point eight seven of a percent, bringing the total city contribution to twenty-two point eight percent of their wages that we contribute to their retirement. So, our total budget as presented for, to you tonight, has expenditures of twenty-seven point six million dollars, which is roughly one and a half percent lower than what was budgeted for twenty twenty. Fifteen million dollars in operating budget is a metric that we've reported in the past. This takes out some of those expenditures, like debt service on things that we're, we're obviously more or less obligated to pay for anyway. So, it gives you kind of a comparison of what that operating budget looks like as a component of that overall expenditure of twenty-seven point six million. So, other budget items, these are primarily capital improvements. We have about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in Park Department capital projects that we have programmed for twenty-one, for twenty twenty-one. A new staff vehicle in the Fire Department, two new police vehicles per their, you know, vehicle replacement plan, some server capacity upgrades for our information technology, and then about six million dollars in sales tax fund or street improvement fund expenditures for roads and road maintenance. Wastewater has about five hundred and ten thousand in capital projects that, again, is to be funded from the wastewater utility fund, not the general fund. So, this is something we always hit on when we're talking budgets, is a comparison to the city mill levy as compared to other cities. And I know Councilmember Warrington, you had asked for some specific comparisons at the last meeting, which hopefully, we, we understood exactly what you're asking for, and we'll kinda go over those. But this is a table view of the comparison that we have completed over the past week or so. And you'll see, this is ranked, the top is, is the lowest property taxes per jurisdiction to the highest. So, lowest to highest is what you see here in this table form, over and assorted by total mill levies, and not just the city mill levy, which is traditionally what we report to you, but total, so this is all taxing entities, city, school districts, state, counties, any other special district that they may have. So, you can kinda see a theme here in that second column, right? So, most of the, most cities that we compared ourselves to in Sedwick County have a lower total mill levy than our residents in Andover do. Of the Butler County cities, you'll see that we are the lowest. And here, you can kinda, to the, the advantage of the table form here is that you can see specifically what is making up for those differences. And you can see, obviously, in Butler, in Butler County, you have Butler County Community College, and then a lot of disparity in what local school districts also levy for taxes.
Lance, if I could point out in that grid, something interesting, even with the school having the highest mill levy it looks on here, Butler County tax adds an additional five mills, and then the college an additional nineteen. So, if you added that with the points, you'd, you'd get it to a point where our mill levy, if you were to subtract out the twenty-five, right? So, if our mill levy is currently at one sixty-five, so fifty, forty, one forty, would put us the third lowest even within, you know, with Cedric County, if you were to take that out, so, we are the lowest, pretty much, you know, other than Wichita, I guess, and Goddard, but really close to that. Just interesting math, but.
Yeah, and we can't really compare ourselves to a city of, you know, six hundred thousand, you know, in the, in the metro area, or three hundred, almost four hundred thousand, I guess, in city limits. But, I agree with that, you know, you, you, you have the college in there that's nineteen point three three six, that every city pays for in Butler County, and, and Cedric County doesn't. I think that needs to be looked at by state at some point. I think we keep talking about that for years now, but I believe there's more Cedric County students that come to Butler County to use the college here than there are in Butler County, so, I hope that some one of our state representatives are, are listening.
And you'll notice, I can't remember exactly what the mill levy was for the community college in twenty twenty, but they did reduce theirs slightly with, for their twenty-one budget, which is reflective here in the mill levy that we have, right, Abigail? So, there, there was a slight reduction there, but yes, there are various location-specific things that factor into those mill levies. A mill in Andover is worth a completely different amount than a mill in pick any other city, right? Cause it's all a function on what your valuation is. So, it's a metric that you can benchmark yourself against, for sure, but there's always individualistic reasonings that kind of behind some of that, but to, you know, to your point, you know, Council President Tabor, that if you look purely at the city mill levy, what we present to you guys traditionally is that outside of Wichita, we are the lowest city, we have the lowest city-specific mill levy. And the Goddard, and that's with fire service, so. So, this is more of a graphical depiction of what you saw on the table here, again, you can see Andover highlighted. Pretty much everything to the left is a Sedwick County municipality, everything to the right is a, is Butler County, and you can kinda see by the different bars there what makes up those differences. But again, we're the lowest in Butler County, and we're slightly higher than most of those in our neighboring county to the west. And here, this just breaks out the municipalities by counties, so you can see how we compare to the other one, our other cities in Butler County on the left, and then overall what Sedwick County cities in the metropolitan area largely look like. So, with that, I can answer, or attempt to answer, any questions that you guys may have about the proposed twenty twenty-one budget?
On your first page, you call Fire District number one as eleven percent mill levy, where is that in this chart?
So, the eleven and whatever mills?
Yeah, so on the, your very first page, you call out holding twenty, twenty twenty-one Fire District number one mill levy at the rate of eleven point one one four.
I wasn't.
Is that included in our city, or is that separate?
I wasn't involved in making this slide, but my belief would be that would not be included. So, if you lived outside of the city limits of Andover, still inside District one, you would have an additional eleven point one four one mills.
Okay.
Correct, the eleven, whatever, that eleven mills for Fire District one only applies to properties outside of the city limits.
Yeah, cause I was looking at that and trying to find it on the Fire District graph here, the first of the three, this one that you were looking at, and it wasn't showing on there, so I guess that would be county, but still in Fire District one.
Correct, so.
So, that, that'd be a separate line item, basically.
Yeah, it definitely, so the city here would be zero if, in that circumstance, and then you would have a township levied largely in its place, so, yes, that forty-two point three one one, three one one mills includes fire service for those within the city of Andover, if you live outside, you don't pay the forty-two point three one one, but you do pay the eleven and change for Fire District one, in addition to whatever other entities they're within.
The Bell, is it Bell Air, has a one point two two nine, is that library?
Yes, that's the regional library.
And what is the C E M district?
Cemetery district.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, if you look at your, look at your individual breakdown, a lot of times, in all, in some of those more rural areas, you will have a cemetery district. So, a portion of your property tax goes to support the local cemetery.
Can we publish these three graphs on our Facebook page?
Yes, we can put together some communications items and publish them on our.
Cause we, we've had people ask about these on, on Facebook, and I think this would be a great graphics to show, show them.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
And write a little context with it for what they're looking at.
Yeah, we can, like, I'm sure most of you guys have seen the Budget One-O-One documents that we produce that kinda focus purely on the city side of it, but we can produce something similar that adds a little bit of context and includes this information.
Just some extra numbers that show that, you know, that we are actually the second lowest, you know, in all this.
Yeah.
Besides Wichita.
We can do that.
Very good. Any other questions on the presentation? Okay, well, I'm gonna open a public hearing then, for this, this is.
Thanks, Lance.
Yeah, thank you, Lance, thanks, Homer. Open a public hearing? Open a public hearing, this is one of the most important things that we do as a city is build this budget. It takes work from a hundred percent of people here and everyone that works for the city. If we have anybody in the public or citizens that would like to to talk or comment. Okay, we do not. Then we're going to move on, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move on to the adoption of this. Anyone would like to, or Lance, Lance, did you need to speak again, are we good? So if anyone would like to make a motion on this.
Mister Mayor, or Mister Council President, I move to approve the two thousand and twenty-one budget for the city of Andover as presented.
Second.
All right, looks like it's Homer and Mike again. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The budget passes. Very good, thank you to everyone in the city that's worked so hard on this. And I know we gave you some interesting requirements this last time, and it took a lot of work to to do that. So we thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, please don't let, don't any of you leave until you've signed the budget for me to turn into the county. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's take us on for number twelve, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
So we have spoken about this at, I think, a previous workshop. For those of you who should be familiar that for park-related items, we have traditionally used a park planning board. That park planning board doesn't, was never officially established, it didn't have any rules or membership, but kind of guidelines. So based on some of the current conversations we've had about priorities for our park system and some upcoming major park-related projects we have going on, one of which is the next item on our agenda, staff thinks it's prudent that we go ahead and officially establish a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So you, the the board itself will be, will consist of nine members and all citizens of the of the city. The mayor or an appointed councilperson will be one of those nine and will serve as the chairperson for this board. The other eight members will be appointed by the mayor and then approved or by the city council. And terms will be two years, and this board will meet at a minimum each quarter annually. So at least four times a year or more frequently as needed. You guys can, I'm not going to go through the duties and functions as it's outlined in the in the staff memo or in the ordinance itself, but in essence, this advisory board is there to serve you guys and staff in making decisions and setting priorities for our parks and recreation system. So outside of our standard meetings, you know, that will have reporting on the condition of our parks and recreation systems. If there's ever a situation that comes up where you want a citizen group that's focused on our parks and recreation systems to provide you guys guidance or advice, this is where you guys will be able to refer items or topics to this board. They serve purely as an advisory role to you and to staff. They don't regulate any of our parks and recreation systems, they can't make rules, purely an advisory board. So the ordinance tonight would establish this board in our city code. If approved, we would begin recruiting or helping the mayor if he asks for staff's help in recruiting members, and we would anticipate and hope that we would have appointees for you to consider at your September eighth meeting, and hopefully have a meeting, our first meeting of this board sometime in September. So I can answer any questions that you guys may have.
Does anyone have any thoughts or questions?
Lance, what happens if we do not have members show up for this meeting? If it's just the mayor and you?
So there'll be a quorum required in order to to take any action. I mean, they don't take official action, they are a voting board, so they'll vote to make recommendations and whatnot. So we'll kind of establish the exact process for that when they adopt their own bylaws, which will be on their first meeting. But in general, you're going to need a quorum to conduct conduct the business of that board. And like a lot of our boards, planning commission, I know it's one, and I think site plan, and I think a lot of other lesses boards, we do have like an attendance requirement, if you will, that if you don't attend, I think, half of the meetings, then you can be replaced. And we would probably, we'd suggest including that in these bylaws that this group will will adopt. We're hoping that if we start this board off on the right foot, get people really involved, especially with this Parks and Recreation System Master Plan, that we can kind of foster some some involvement and attendance.
Lance, what would their recommendations that they would do as an advisory board? Would those recommendations come to the council at a workshop prior so we can discuss things? In just case we need to tweak something before we vote on it in a next meeting?
Yeah, we definitely can do that, we can structure that in whichever way you think is best, depending on the situations that they're discussing.
What do y'all think of that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely need to talk about it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Mister President, I did have one, I guess, comment since JT's in front of us as well. I did get a little overzealous and excited about the the thought of having a board. So I did put that on Nextdoor app saying, hey, we're looking for some potential folks, and if they had interest, email me. So I just, I wanted to put that out there, I don't think that really did anything, but it was before that we had, you know, doing this, so I just wanted to be upfront.
No, that does remind me, if anyone watching or if you're talking to anyone that may be interested, iCompass, our website, and with the links included in tonight's packet, that if somebody is interested in potentially serving on this board, to follow that link that's in the packet, or go to our website, or call staff and we'll help them. But there's a way to submit your interest to serve on this board.
I'll forward you my, the emails that I did receive.
That works.
JT, a couple quick questions. Or when an advisory board such as this is put together by a city, are there state requirements for things like reporting or Open Meeting Act requirements or, I don't know, nepotism or conflict of interest type rules that might apply that are state-driven for these types of boards?
The answer to your question is yes, and I believe we've incorporated all those into ordinance. To be very clear, there's actually a state law that allows a second-class city like Andover to establish a park board. That law would actually empower them to make decisions about parks and how they're functioning. This ordinance stopped short of that, but nonetheless, under the circumstance of it being a park board, almost just like the statute, except with the authority to direct decision-making. We went ahead and followed the statute verbatim, and that includes in the ordinance itself, anti-nepotism clause implied on the the people who are appointed to these positions cannot be family member or council member. You detract the statutory legal identity as I recall.
Yeah, no member of the board shall be related by blood or marriage to the mayor, members of the city council, or any appointed officer.
And officers will include only those people you appoint as actual officers, so.
Okay.
My vast families, house, or plenty of people, but that would be okay.
Because you're not a.
Residents, and that's another requirement of course that they should be social taxpayer.
Okay. It'd be great to have the school board somehow, or the school system somehow be on it, have someone represented from there. Maybe the community college, but maybe not, though, they don't really have any kind of park impact that I can think of, and maybe a couple developers that are currently active would be smart. All right, so we have a, in front of us, a recommendation for an for an emotion, so.
Mister President.
It looks like JT's going to ask a question.
Of course.
Or states.
Yes, if the motion could include a typographical correction to section eleven point four oh four, which is supposed to be eleven dash four oh four, and we're going to craft the ordinance, revoke the ordinance, review the ordinance, and regraft the ordinance, except on this aspect. There'll actually be a dash between the eleven four oh four and eleven point four oh four. So if your motion would include making the city a typographical correction.
Mister President, I move to adopt an ordinance creating Article Four, Sections eleven dash four zero one through eleven dot, dash four oh four of Chapter eleven, the the code of the city of Andover and Kansas, establishing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the clerical error in there as well.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right, Greg, we have a a motion by Homer and a second by Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, and we now have a park board in the city of Andover, very good. Hopefully we'll have really good turnout on people wanting to be a part of it. So continue on with parks. Lance, if you want to talk about the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
So I'm sure you guys have all read our current, I think it's two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-four Park System Master Plan, which is by its date set to expire here fairly quickly. We originally were planning on doing our next ten-year update to our Park System Master Plan, starting in two thousand and twenty-one. Seventy-five thousand dollars for, to fund the development of this plan was included in your two thousand and twenty-one budget that you just approved or adopted. Staff is suggesting, recommending that we go ahead and begin that process as early as possible. One main reason for that is we are hoping to have substantial completion of this next ten-year plan by this time next year, so we can have a really good idea and have a really strong strategic plan for what to include in terms of capital investments and operational costs for our parks in our two thousand and twenty-two budget, where if we waited further into two thousand and twenty-one, we would miss the twenty-two budget, and thus, two thousand and twenty-three would be the first year that we could actually budget for any of what's came, what's produced from this park and master, or this Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So that's why we're bringing that forward to you now. Generally, what a Parks and Recreation System Master Plan is going to provide, it's going to have a fairly robust public process, public involvement process, and that R F P that we are proposing to send out, and hopefully you guys will authorize tonight. We have specifically asked firms that are interested to detail to us what public engagement looks like in the current world. So if traditional in-person public engagement is not something that's advisable or prohibited at the time, we want to know what that looks like, so to be innovative and get as many different voices as we can to kind of strategically plan for this next ten years. So it'll develop a strategic action plan for us to use in decisions and investments and planning, just in generally over the next ten years. And it will specifically give us a a site-specific design for Thirteenth Street Sports Park. There's a a number of conversations we've had over the past six months, year, whatever it is, about the the future of that specific site. Do we need more, you know, baseball, softball fields? What exactly do we need? What is a reimagining of that park look like? This will come from that, and it'll be a result of that robust public process. So it it it's a a large endeavor, a large project, but one that we think it prudent to start now as soon as possible. That seventy-five thousand dollars to fund this project is available in the same funding source as was included in the twenty-one budget, the Park Improvement Fund. So the funds are available to start this now, and obviously if we expended that in twenty, we would not expend it again in two thousand and twenty-one. Your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will serve as the selection committee for the firm, so we'll issue this R F P if authorized. They will review and make a selection or a recommendation for a selection to you as the governing body, who will approve an ultimate agreement with the firm. We're hoping to get it started as soon as possible, hopefully by the end of the year. So it'll take a while to get up and running, but we want to, we would like to start it as soon as possible. So I can answer any questions you guys may have about that process.
Any questions? All right, entertain a motion.
Mister President, I move to approve the posting, distribution, and release of the request for proposals for professional services related to the development of the two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and thirty-one Parks and Recreation System Master Plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Homer and a second by Mike. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, another pretty major milestone that we just kind of went through. It was pretty quick to talk about, but a ton of work went into it. And it's, it could be transformative for the city over the next ten to fifty years, really, on how we build the parks out, so. Good job, staff, very good. All right, Les, you're up.
I look forward to that park plan, followed by the next comprehensive plan.
Right.
A few months ago, you accepted the plat for the Butler County Community College addition and petitions for public water, drainage, and paving of Yorktown Road, Yorktown Parkway, and Commerce Street. The engineers have designed those projects, and in addition to the easements that were shown on the face of the plat, they're requiring some additional easements from both Butler County Community College and the adjacent neighbors to the south and the east. Butler has signed those dedications there, here in front of you tonight for your acceptance. We are working with the adjacent owners and expect to have some some more dialogue with them real soon.
Very good. All right, does anybody have any questions, thoughts? No, entertain a motion then.
Mister President, I'd like to accept the sidewalk easement, drainage easement, and temporary construction easement dedications from Butler Community College for Yorktown Parkway and Commerce Street water drainage and paving improvements projects.
Second.
Was that Homer that seconded that?
Yes.
All right, got a motion and a second by Mike and Homer. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Wow, so we're all the way to member items now. So we'll go ahead and just kind of go in order that that we did roll call, so go ahead.
I just want to thank staff for bringing us stuff or things in here and and notes and on the agenda. The budget, getting us prepared over the last couple of months with that kind of stuff. And and having each each budget kind of broken down into a different class, although we're not all doing it, you know, at night, you know, one night or one one time. So I really appreciate all the work that goes into that. And I just want to thank the chiefs here, Les, Donna, Lance, Susan, everybody that's getting that stuff done. So thank you, that's all I have.
Mister President, I want to thank Chief Keller for reaching out to Sedgwick on the police car. That was an amazing thing and awesome gesture that that you were a part of, and I really appreciate that. I also want to send out prayers, you know, to the mayor and his family, and hope everything turns out so well.
Who's next?
It's me, I have no items tonight.
Okay, thanks, Sheldon. Skip myself, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to second what Mike and Homer said, well said.
Thank you, Greg, Tim?
Since everybody's already said what I was going to say. Troy, your turn, sir.
Okay, um, yeah, I would.
Be comfortable.
Definitely say, no, no. So I, I learned from my daughter that really long discussions just don't go well, so I'm trying to help my.
Lays it overlooked.
I'm trying to shorten them, but the one thing I would like to to thank, again, the staff for their their diligent work on allowing us to have an in-person meeting, although we were spaced, the masks, the number of people, even though we didn't require it here, it's it's excellent. And I've found now that I've been on so many Zoom meetings that people don't focus as well. There's not as much good discussion, and I think the decisions that are made, maybe they're the right ones, but it just doesn't feel right sometimes. Whereas when we're here in person, we're able to see each other, talk, ask real questions, it makes a difference. And it's, and this happened because of staff, and we thank you for doing that. I don't have anything further, would anybody from staff like to, say anything? Okay, well, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mister President, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Had a motion by Homer and a second by Mike to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody. I was going to say man. Pretty quick. Yeah, we got to sign. Stuff to sign, everybody. Stuff to sign, everybody.